Good afternoon. I'll call to order the June 15th meeting of the Minneapolis City Planning Commission. My name is Matt Brown. I serve as President of the Commission. I'm joined today by Commissioners Cronzer, Gagnon, Slack, Gisselman, and Forney. Our first item of business today is to approve the actions from the June 1st, 2015 meeting. May I have a motion to approve those actions? All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? All right, and that carries. Our next item of business is to organize the agenda. We'll determine which items we will discuss, which items will be on the consent agenda, and which items will be continued. So I'll go over the agenda, which, copies of which are available in the hallway. Item number one is Holiday Inn Express at 317 Second Avenue South. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on that item? Seeing no one, we will put that on the consent agenda. Item number two is 3414 East 25th Street. That is a rezoning. That item was continued from the June 1st meeting. We'll discuss that item. Item number three is the Fighting Chance Boxing Club at 1704 33rd Avenue North. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on that item? Seeing no one, we will put that item on the consent agenda. Item number four is Anashnabi at 1600 East 19th Street. That is several applications for an assisted living facility. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on that item? Seeing no one, we will put item four on consent. Item number five is the Anashnabi Parking Lot, also at 1600 East 19th Street. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on that item? Seeing no one, we will put that on consent. Item number six is a zoning code text amendment pertaining to regulations for hotels and bed and breakfast establishments. We'll discuss that item. Item number seven is also a zoning code text amendment. That one relates to off-street parking regulations, and we will discuss that item. And finally, item number eight is an addition at the Walker Arts Center and site improvements at 725 Vineland Place and 1750 Hennepin Avenue. That item will be continued to the July 6th meeting. So our, um, yes? Yeah, in this, so that's, that's right. I understand there are a number of people who are here for an item that was on the Committee of the Whole Consent Agenda, or I should say the Committee of the Whole Meeting Agenda on June 4th related to a public land acquisition at 28th Street and Longfellow Avenue. This, this meeting is not a public hearing for that item, so we won't be taking any public comment for this. The intent of this is to simply approve some items that were found consistent with the comprehensive plan at a Committee of the Whole meeting a couple of weeks ago, so we won't be taking any comment on that item today. So our amended agenda is items number one, three, four, and five will be on consent. We will discuss items two, six, and seven, and item number eight will be continued to July 6th, 2015. May I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Our next item of business is the Committee of the Whole Consent Agenda, and Commissioner Slack, do you have a report on that?
Thank you, President Brown. At the June 4th, 2015 Committee of the Whole, we heard two staff reports regarding land sales, 3522 Aldrich Avenue North and 2424 16th Avenue South, and the recommended motion was approval of the staff report that the item was consistent with the Minneapolis Plan. And the third item was a public land acquisition, 1860 28th Street, East and 2717 Longfellow Avenue, which was, the recommended motion was also approval of the staff report that the item was consistent with the Minneapolis Plan.
All right, and I will take that as a motion to approve the Committee of the Whole Consent Agenda. Is there a second? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. And our next item of business is, involves the items to be continued. May I have a motion to continue item number eight to the July 6th, 2015 meeting. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
And then our next item will be the consent agenda, which includes items one, three, four, and five. At this time, I'll open the public hearing for the consent agenda. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on items one, three, four, and five? Yes, sir. Number three is the Fighting Chance Boxing Club at 1704 33rd Avenue North. Is that the item you're referring to?
Yeah, I'm hard to hear.
Oh, okay. I apologize. If, you know, okay, okay. If, if that's the case, we can take that item off the consent agenda and discuss that as well. So why don't we add that? And then may I have another motion then to approve the agenda as amended with items one, four, and five on the consent agenda, and then items two, three, six, and seven for discussion?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we'll do that. And again, I did open the public hearing for the items on the consent agenda, so that is now items one, four, and five. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on those items? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing, and Commissioners may have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Aye.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll move on next to our items for discussion. We'll begin with item number two, which is a rezoning at 3414 East 25th Street, and staff is Mr. Hanauer. We can begin with the presentation.
Chair and Commissioners, CPED is supportive of the rezoning application going from that R1A to C1 for this parcel in the Seward neighborhood, as we felt it met the five findings. 3414 East 25th Streets, an 8,000-square-foot lot with a 4,200-square-foot building. The proposal is to renovate the existing office commercial building for one or two tenants. Those specific establishments is not known at the time. Although the parcel is not on a designated community corridor or it's a commercial node, we felt that is appropriate given the comprehensive plan guidance, the parcel and area history, and the current conditions. The designated future land use is urban neighborhood. That is primarily residential, but it does support neighborhood-serving commercial uses scattered throughout that residential area. And the purpose of the C1 neighborhood, Commercial District, is to provide convenient shopping environment for small-scale retail sales and commercial services compatible with adjacent residential uses. We are, as I mentioned, supportive of the rezoning for, one of the things being the historic context, 25th Street was zoned commercial from 1924 to 1963, and the subject building was built in 1960, so therefore built during a time when commercial zoning allowed for the building to be built. 25th Street is, is unique. I apologize in not being the scale of this map, but it's a unique street in that it was a streetcar route, which was common to have commercial properties line the, line the route. And today, 25th Street is a thoroughfare with over approximately 2,600 vehicles traveling on a daily basis. So it's not a typical residential street, and you have a number of commercial uses scattered along 25th Street, including Birchwood Cafe, a block to the west, Cafe Racer, a few blocks to the west, and then just to the south of the subject property is I-1 Zone Property, and then one block to the east is a residentially zoned property, but it has three commercial Just another, I wanted to show another, an aerial showing, giving more context. There was a number of public comments submitted in the addendum packet, a letter of support from the Seward Neighborhood Group for the proposed rezoning, and another letter of support from a nearby property owner, and three letters of opposition. Happy to answer questions you may have.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, are there any questions for staff? Seeing none, I will open the public hearing on this item. I'd like first to hear from the applicant, so if you could come forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Brian Walters, 4557 Park Ave., Minneapolis. I'm one of the owners of Whitree, the owning company. Darren gave a good brief history of the property, so you can understand the history of the zoning. We purchased the property on the public auction initially. Our thoughts were to actually utilize a portion of the building for ourselves and lease out the office spaces as well. What we've run up against is the fact that the non-conforming use process requires this two to three months for, basically to go through a public hearing for any type of use that would go in the building at this point. And we've been marketing it for over six months now, and we have not found a tenant that's willing to go through that process just to find out if they would be allowed to apply for a business permit and then begin the build-out process. So if you can't tell from the exterior picture, but there is a significant amount of renovation that we'd have to do inside as well, update the plumbing, HVAC, a lot of things in there that need work. So that whole process to get a new tenant in is now looking at four, five, to six months after a build-out. And we've had, we've had several good businesses that we thought would be good applicants. We actually went down the road a little bit with one before they found an additional space. And that's the problem, is competing with other C1 spaces that are nearby that an applicant could go in and initially apply for a business license right away. So once we came to the conclusion that we weren't going to be able to find businesses willing to go through this process, we met with the neighbors, started the application for the rezoning. So initially, we had, we obtained more than the required two-thirds signatures of the neighbors within 100 feet. And then we, we also, when we heard there was, you know, opposition from the SNG, when we went to several of the SNG meetings, we basically started to canvass the neighborhood and meet the neighbors within, within the three or four-block radius. And from doing that, I think that was part of the petition you guys submitted, we received over 90 signatures of folks that said they would be in support of rezoning, and the understanding that would help bring in business, revitalize this building, and bring it back to life. So, other than that, if you have any questions for us, we just feel the rezoning will really help revitalize this and add to the community if we can bring in some new businesses.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, are there any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, we can move on to other speakers. How many of you here are here to speak on this item? Okay, a couple people. I guess you can decide who goes first, but please step forward and state your name and address for the record.
Can I just stand here and say something?
No, you, you do need to come to the microphone because the meeting is, is recorded.
Well, I'm a Seward resident. I live adjacent to this building, and I am opposed to the rezoning from residential to commercial. I'm opposed to it because it would take any power from the neighborhood to, to be part of the process of deciding what business could go in there. And also because they, if it's, if it's residential, they are required to put a green space in the back, which would fit much better into the residential area there than an eight-car parking lot, which a commercial license would admit. Have them have an eight-car parking lot, which I don't think is right directly next door to other backyards, play areas, and backyard retreats, and gardens, and it would just bring an extra traffic, pollution, noise, and so on. And also, primarily, I think the residents, we're a very strong neighborhood. We've lived there a long time, and we love our neighborhood very much. And we're a very quiet neighborhood, and we would like to have a say in just what kind of business is going to go there. There are houses all around it, and play areas directly across from it, across the alley from it, where the cars would be coming to park in the back, and children are playing there. There's free roaming pets, cats, and it's just that kind of neighborhood. And I just don't think that having a parking lot and all that additional traffic would at all be to our benefit at the neighborhood. That's my thing.
All right, thank you. And if you don't mind, state your name and address for the record. Please, please state your name and address for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I had.
No, you, you didn't.
I'm sorry. I just went right in talking. I'm Joanne Sabaka, and my address is 2444 35th Avenue South.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We can move on to the next speaker, and please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Elise Wurger. I live at 3512 East 25th Street, so three houses away from the property. I have two concerns. One is, a lot of neighbors I speak to say that they signed this petition thinking they were signing for a daycare to go in, or thinking they understood what was happening, and they now feel that they don't. And my other is the, I'm opposed to the zoning change, at least as I understand it. Three of the nearest neighborhood businesses are, are one, and they seem to be finding tenants, and I don't, I don't see what is it for me as a homeowner in the neighborhood. What will I gain from this being C1? I recognize that the owners will gain something, and my concern is that, as Yellow Tree, I don't understand exactly, I'm sorry, what Yellow Tree is, but some type of realty operation. I'm not sure what, but my concern is that they, owners will come in, rezone, be able to sell it at a higher profit, and who, who's coming in next? I don't, I haven't understood the clear neighborhood commitment to this rezoning. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next speaker. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Prudence Lake, and I live at 3514 East 25th Street. I'll just be kind of quick, you know, I just kind of moved into that neighborhood about three years ago, and I liked the neighborhood. It's wonderful over there. I didn't want to move into a neighborhood with a busy street. No, I'm worried that I'm going to have to change my house into like an antique store or something really stupid like that, that I don't want to. There is going to be a whole lot more traffic around. There's no parking. A lot of people, my neighbor, next-door neighbor doesn't have a garage, and I'm sure it's the same with a lot of others. I'm fortunate that I do. There's a stop sign right across the street from, or right where I live, and there's, people go through it all the time, so it's going to happen even more when there's more traffic. And I don't usually get into this kind of thing, but I just think there's just something that's not quite right, because I, I too believe that anybody who really wants to get, move into a building, and they like the neighborhood, and they think they've got a good business, they would be willing to wait for three months, period. I don't understand this. People wait three months to move into a house? And that's all I have to say. I think it's going to be a flip.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on item number two? Yes, please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Rob Lubinow, 3432 24th Avenue. I'm also an owner of the property. And just to address a few things as far as, we did go and meet with many of the neighbors, and we spent significant amount of time with anyone with questions. We also provided them, spent as much time as they want, kind of what our intent was for the property, provided them what type of business could move into a C1 district or the C1 zoning. And there's a few questions on the parking, so if it stays as is, actually, there'd be additional cars that can't park on the lot that would be forced onto the street due to the existing parking lot that's behind the building, that's, that's off-street parking currently, that would be the green space, as well as our interior parking. There's a garage accessible from the back off of the parking that would lose additional parking spaces, too. Other than that, it's, again, just speaking to the signatures and spending time with people, it's, it's, we've informed people as best as we could as to what our intent was. We met with neighborhood groups. We've been held open houses at the property to let people know what we were doing and answer questions, as well as going to two or three of the neighborhood group meetings.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, are there any questions? Commissioner Bender?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm, I'm going to move to deny this application for rezoning, and I would like to speak about that. There's a second.
Is there a second? Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Commissioner Bender, maybe you can speak first, and then Commissioner Lupe Pier.
If there's a question for staff, I'm happy to.
Okay. Commissioner Lupe Pier, maybe you can ask your question.
Okay, well, I just had a question for staff really quickly. So today, we're reviewing a rezoning application, not necessarily site plan review. Is that correct? Okay. And then my second question for staff relates to the fact that they're going for rezoning because right now it's zoned, a residential zoning, so the only use that would be authorized is residential right now, because it's lost its non-conforming rights? Is that correct?
That is not correct.
Okay.
They, they do retain their non-conforming rights until the end of the year, December.
Oh, something I thought they said they had lost in 21.
No, I tried to, on the page two, to say, this is in the site description, Present Use section. I'll just read it. The applicant, Mr. Walters, in the Whitree LLC, purchased the property in December 2014 from Hennepin County. Due to the county forfeiture process, the property has been determined by its own administrator not to have lost its non-conforming rights. So maybe it's the double negative, but they do retain the non-conforming rights until December 15th.
Okay, so currently, they're able to use it for some limited range of commercial uses, if it currently exists?
By going through, they would likely have to go through a change in non-conforming use application to bring in a new commercial tenant.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Bender?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Generally, I'm very supportive of these sort of local commercial nodes within neighborhoods, but here, I think we have a situation where, you know, nearly everything nearby is residential. And I think because we have the non-conforming application process available to this property owner, I think it is premature to rezone this property commercial. I've heard from the council office that they've received a number of calls from folks who signed the rezoning petition, who later, you know, didn't quite understand, and sort of legally, it still stands as their signature, but I think it raises questions about, you know, just making sure that, that the process that we have in place is, is, you know, they're able to go through that process. And I would suggest that if there is interest in adding more commercial properties to this part of town, again, which is highly residential, that a rezoning study would be a more appropriate policy approach to take, rather than rezoning a property one by one from residential to commercial.
All right. Is there anyone else? Any further discussion on this motion? Seeing, seeing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Bender.
Aye. Forney?
No.
Gagnon?
Aye.
Gisselman?
Aye.
Cronzer?
Aye.
Lupe Pier?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
So that is six to one.
All right, and that motion carries, since we are recommending, or I should say, we, we are approving a, a motion that is different from what was described in the staff report. It'd be a good idea if we came up with some findings. Would anyone like to take a stab at that?
It could move to direct staff to prepare findings, what we normally do. Is that fine?
Mr. Wood?
Commissioner Bender, Commissioners, given that you're making a recommendation to the city council on a rezoning in this case, the city attorney won't be preparing findings, so we actually look for clear rationale and findings from the planning commission in these instances.
So, and I think Commissioner Bender, you, you alluded to some potential findings in your statement. Maybe you could just rehash some of those very quickly?
And I'm sorry to interrupt, but in the case of a rezoning, unlike most other applications, this is a legislative decision, and you need not affirmatively make every one of the findings, but certainly you need to make the comprehensive plan finding, and then the rest are sort of a on-the-balance type of analysis. And it's probably relevant that this site is not located on either a commercial or, or community corridor, or in the neighborhood commercial node.
Yes. So I, I think my previous statements really articulated this, but I'd be happy to go one by one through the analysis. Is that what you want me to do? So, first of all, I think that the fact that this area is largely residential and that there hasn't been a rezoning study to identify places where we want to rezone for commercial is significant here. I think that the non-conforming use process provides the opportunity to meet the comprehensive plan's goals of, of supporting local neighborhood businesses. So, and I don't see any inconsistency with the other policies here. I mean, in fact, I would say that in, in, on the question of public interest, that rezoning could potentially be seen as solely for the interest of a single property owner, again, because a rezoning study hasn't been done to comprehensively look at the zoning of residential versus commercial in this area. And this is, again, focused just on one property rather than on a larger area. I'm just reading through here the points in the staff report. I think there are reasonable uses permitted, again, because we have the alternative process to to use.
I think, I think that's, that's good.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so that, that motion carries, and again, that is a recommendation to the zoning and planning committee of the city council, since it is a rezoning. So that concludes our consideration of item number two. We'll move on to item number three, which is Fighting Chance Boxing Club at 1704 33rd Avenue North. Mr. Hanauer is
All right, CPED is also supportive, is supportive of this rezoning application from R1A to C1 for this parcel in the Fallow neighborhood. The parcel is 16,000 square feet. It's the establishment, or the parcel where the former Fire Station Number 14 was or is. And built in 1939, the Fire Station 14 is eligible for local designation as a local historic landmark. As mentioned in the staff report, further research and study is required to make that final determination, but we felt that this was an important historic resource for the community and the city. Proposed use is a nonprofit boxing gym with office space and a yoga studio. And in terms of, even though the property is not designated as a community corridor, the rezoning from, to C1 felt was appropriate, given the comprehensive plan, the building history, and surrounding area. The designated future land use, once again, urban neighborhood, is supportive of neighborhood-serving commercial uses scattered throughout the area. The purpose of that C1 zoning district, as mentioned before, is to provide convenient shopping environment for small-scale retail sales and commercial services compatible with the adjacent residential uses. And the Fire Station 14 was located here for 76 years and operated as that. The rezoning will allow more flexibility to have a new tenant come in to its place into this unique, unique building. C1 zoning has been helpful for other fire stations in Minneapolis to have commercial tenants. I mentioned Fire Station 19 on University Avenue, Fire Station 21 on Mini-Haha, and Fire Station 25 on 4,500 Nicollet Avenue Block. And since this is a unique building, 8,100 square feet, and the amount of work that's needed to re-bring it up to a livable, workable condition, felt it was unlikely that a single-family home would likely be coming into this property. So with that, CPED was supportive of the rezoning application.
All right, Commissioners, any questions for staff? Seeing none, I will open the public hearing. I'd like first to hear from the applicant.
Chair, I, I, I hope they are here, but they were here at the beginning of this meeting.
Okay.
And they were, started consent agenda. They think left a few minutes early. I tried to get them.
Okay, okay.
Yes, some frantic text message.
Okay, well, in that case, we had one, one person at least who wanted to speak on this item. Would you like to come to the microphone, and please state your name and address for the record?
My name is Thomas Lamb. Oh, they took the picture down.
My name is Thomas Lamb. Oh, they took the picture down. I live right next to that, across the alley. I have some concerns and reservations. I first signed the petition af, after being told numerous and numerous times to go have sex with myself from all the kids that were hanging around the building, having to clean up the mess, seeing them trying to smash the windows out, which I called, in fact, I talked to council president Johnson right up before the meeting and said, you better go get some more panels because there's two more windows that are crashed out. The kids that were hanging around there, what they had before was a basketball hoop. And I understand the city has outlawed those from the streets and stuff like that, but I'd bring out candy and offer money if they could make the longer shots and everything. And inevitably I was said, go have sex with yourself. And that doesn't bother me that much because after 30 years working at Department of Corrections, I've heard it many times. When I'm retired now and my wife just died, she'd be all in favor of anything that went on there because she used to go over there every single day to have coffee with the firemen. My reservations are, I'm not going to put up with any crap like that for the rest of my time, listening to what's going, listening to that kind of stuff. I just need some, making some assurances that the proper type of supervision. Another individual is with me tonight here, and that's his, that's his concern too, that they, I'm not against, completely against this thing. I mean, do something with the building and understand what I was told about how much money they want to sink into the building. And I think that's all well and good and all that, but they stole my garden tools. I didn't get my garden in this year. They weren't very clever because they just stuffed the garden tools into bushes down the street and I found them. So that's, those are my reservations, making sure that whatever they put in that thing, I don't have to come back and file a lawsuit with harassment or, or whatever. And I know what they're putting in there and the agents and stuff like that. But like I say, I, I just, I'm old. Like I told you, I can't hear well. I just like some peace and quiet.
All right. Well, thank you. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak on this item? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, would someone like to start us off with a motion? Commissioner Gisselman?
I would, I would make a motion that we approve of staff's recommendation to approve the rezoning in this situation. And I just want to mention to the, the individual who just spoke, I mean, it sounds like you had some valid concerns about, you know, future activity on this site, although I think that, I think that there's probably better channels to address that kind of potential behavior, whether it be through city licensing or other police enforcement. But again, for those reasons, I'm making a motion, I'm going to support the staff's recommendation.
All right. You, you, you had your chance to speak. We're, the public hearing is now closed. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Slack?
Aye.
Luki-Pier?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Gisselman?
Aye.
Gignan?
Aye.
Forney?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
So that is seven zero.
All right. And that motion carries. So that concludes our business on that item. Item number six is our next item for discussion. That is a zoning code text amendment pertaining to hotels and bed and breakfast establishments. Commissioner Kronzer, you had requested that we discuss this item. Is there a specific issue you'd like staff to address?
The allowable rooms in the bed and breakfast increase, just curious on your research with the Pure Cities.
Yes. So this is something that we did talk about at committee, the whole, whether or not we wanted to go beyond five rooms as staff had recommended in the initial draft for a bed and breakfast. I think we talked particularly about some of the historic mansions or just other large residential structures in the city that maybe have more than six bedrooms. So again, one bedroom would need to be for the owner operator of the facility and then a number of units available for rental beyond that. So I looked at, I think there are a couple that I cited in the staff reports that were a little bit more local. Of course, with, you know, with any sort of thing like this, it's a pretty broad range. So the ones that I had listed in the staff report, I won't go over again, but beyond those, we looked at Kansas City, Missouri has an eight room maximum for a bed and breakfast facility. Omaha has a minimum of two rooms and no maximum. St. Louis, Missouri breaks it into three categories. One is a guest house bed and breakfast with up to seven. One is a homestay bed and breakfast with a max of two. And then Detroit had a max of 10. And then looking at what's in the staff report, Chicago has a max of 11 in a B and B. Denver goes all the way up to 20. Phoenix, Arizona has a range of three to five, depending on the street category. Seattle is five and St. Paul is four. And just as a reminder, we're currently at three for a maximum. So we did want to have some consistency between the maximum number of rooms allowed in a bed and breakfast and the minimum allowed for, or the minimum required for a hotel. So the minimum required for a hotel right now is five. Not to say that that necessarily has to be consistent, but that was another factor that we took into account. And then also just talking to the operators of the current bed and breakfast that are in the city right now, there are two that are licensed. They each have the maximum of three rooms and said, you know, for an owner operator, essentially it's kind of a home occupation. That's typically one or two people, not many employees beyond that. They thought any more than the three rooms might be a stretch for them personally, but that's not to say we're not going to get more or that these may be taken over by other operators. So that's where we went and how we came up with just leaving it at five.
All right. Commissioner Bender, you have a question for staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There are other distinctions, though, between bed and breakfasts and hotels, right? So that it wouldn't be a problem if we overlapped the number of rooms necessarily because of all of the other differences between the two uses, is that right?
Correct. So a bed and breakfast establishment is actually, it has to be a residential dwelling that's owner occupied. There are a lot of additional specific development standards for bed and breakfast beyond those for a hotel. So there are definitely other measures in place. The parking requirement is one space for every three rooms. So if we increase the maximum, say from five to six, the parking requirement wouldn't change. It would still be two spaces needed plus one for the owner.
Right. Are there any other questions for staff? Seeing none, I will open the public hearing on this item. Is there anyone wishing to speak on item number six? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners may have a motion on item number six. Commissioner Kronzer?
I would like to move staff recommendation with the addition of a modification to the maximum rooms allowed for bed and breakfast to go up to eight. And I can speak on that in a second.
All right.
And just, you know, thinking about the existing mansions that are in my neighborhood, you know, it might provide some improved economic viability in some, in some other parts of town as well that I'm not as familiar with, but giving a little bit more flexibility might make, make these things work. So.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Gisselman?
And I would just add that I'm going to support this as well, just on the basis that, to me, I mean, if the goal is to encourage, you know, a mixed, mixed variety of lodging options in the city and also increase possible small business opportunity, then increasing this to aid, especially in consideration of what other cities are doing seems, seems to make sense.
Right. Commissioner Bender?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to chime in, I think that this is a great suggestion. I think it just increases the flexibility with what people can do with the existing building. It's not going to change the intensity of the size of buildings. It's going to change what people can do with inside them. And I think to Commissioner Kronzer's point, it will add more flexibility in parts of the city where there are a lot of beautiful old buildings that people would like to reuse and just make it more economically viable for them to do so.
All right. Is there any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Forney?
Aye.
Gignan?
Aye.
Gisselman?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Luki-Pier?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Seven zero.
All right. And that motion carries. And again, that was, that was to approve staff recommendation with one, one addition that is changing the maximum number of rooms allowed in a bed and breakfast establishment to eight. So that concludes our discussion on that item. Next item is item number seven, which is also a zoning code text amendment. This one is for changes to off-street parking regulations. And Mr. Wittenberg is staff.
Thank you. Commissioners, this is a zoning code text amendment that would revise residential off-street parking standards for multifamily uses in areas well-served by bus or rail transit. At a city council meeting in January, Councilmember Bender introduced the subject matter for this zoning code text amendment. Since that time, CPED staff, primarily myself and Mr. Hanauer, have worked with Councilmember Bender and her staff on analyzing alternatives and discussing the issue with, with various stakeholders and running ideas through those stakeholders. And we also had a open house forum held at the Mill City Museum on May 21st. Draft of the amendment was also discussed prior to that at the April 30th Planning Commission Committee, the whole meeting. A webpage was established for the project that featured the draft recommendations and information about the timeline and the public process. The table on this section of code text summarizes the sort of heart of the amendment. You'll see that we are recommending differentiation between smaller scale projects of 50 units or less and larger scale projects of 51 units or greater. Within those categories, within 350 feet of a bus or rail transit stop with 15 minute or less headways, the multifamily residential parking requirement would be eliminated, again, for projects of all sizes. Within a quarter mile of a frequent bus service or half mile of frequent rail service, the reduction for multifamily residential would be 100% for the smaller scale projects and 50% for the larger scale projects. And then smaller amendment to areas within 350 feet of the less frequent transit service of a half, half hour headways or less, you would still retain a 10% reduction, which aligns with today's off-street parking incentive in transit, which areas. So just to review how this plays out on the map, the areas in blue would feature the 100% reduction. These are areas, again, with adjacent to transit service with 15 minute or less headways throughout the city. The areas in yellow are within one quarter mile of the frequent bus service or one half mile of the frequent rail service. This is that same map, only with zoning districts. And you'll see areas in yellow are all of the areas within the distances in question from transit service that have R1 through R2B zoning. So essentially, unless those areas are upzoned, the amendment as it stands right now is largely meaningless in those areas because you cannot build a three or more unit project in those areas zoned R1 through R2B. Apps described in the staff report, the amendment is intended to align with the city's comprehensive plan policies related to transportation, housing, and land use and urban design. Those policies are summarized on pages six through eight of the staff report. We think that the proposed changes are a significant step in the right direction for all of those elements, land use, urban design, housing affordability, as well as more efficient, I'm sorry, more appropriate urban design that better utilizes space in a more traditional urban form sort of way. We revised the parking standards for commercial uses back in 2009. At that time, we largely left residential parking standards alone with some exceptions, such as the downtown districts, where we have not had minimum parking standards since 2009. In addition to the city's comprehensive plan, the climate action plan also references this issue, as also referred to in the staff report. The climate action plan clearly recommends that the city adopt a more aggressive approach to the transit incentive for off-street parking in transit in areas well-served by transit. As referenced there, in the climate action plan, the current reduction that multifamily project gets in areas well-served by transit is 10%. And that is currently within 300 feet of transit service of 30 minutes or less. So you essentially have to have a project right at that transit stop in order to qualify for that relatively modest reduction right now. Research into the parking standards found in peer cities indicates that a number of peer cities have already taken steps to substantially reduce minimum parking standards in transit corridors. And you see those peer city standards also in the staff report. And just to cover some of the outcomes of development generally on smaller scale projects in peer cities.
Mr. Wittenberg, we actually can't see the policy statement that I think the first bullet has there.
Thank you. So just to be clear, the policy statement, continue to adjust minimum parking requirements to better promote alternative modes of transportation. And then it specifically references the current 10% reduction within 300 feet. Thank you for pointing that out. So again, these are generally smaller scale projects. This is a project in Portland, Oregon. 19 units, no parking spaces with ground level commercial uses. Another project in Portland, 31 units of housing, ground level retail, provided no off-street parking. 30 units of apartments, ground level retail, eight parking spaces and one shared vehicle space. Project in Seattle, Washington, 35 apartments, 19 parking spaces. Another project in Seattle, 32 units, 19 parking spaces. So while this change would allow for significant flexibility near transit, the actual parking supply in new development projects will, of course, be, continue to be influenced by market demand, lender requirements, the costs associated with constructing parking and the physical constraints associated with building parking on any given site. Our experiences downtown, where we haven't had parking minimum requirements since 2009, have played out that those standards often result in developers building to a standard that exceeds, meets and exceeds our off-street parking minimums right now. We expect that that will likely continue to be the case in many instances. It's worth noting, and certainly a point of discussion, commissioners are interested, that in the university area overlay district, they have recently gone through a pretty substantial discussion about the unique parking requirements in that district. And the proposal in front of you would not change the parking standards in the university area overlay district, which for the most part are one half space per bedroom. With that, staff is recommending approval of the zoning code text amendment and be happy to respond to any questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Luki-Pier, do you have a question for?
Yeah, I just had to, for my own clarification sake. So if we're saying most of the R2B zoning wouldn't really be affected, if somebody owned So if we're saying most of the R2B zoning wouldn't really be affected, if somebody owned a multifamily unit under 50 units that was considered non-conforming in that zoning already, does this mean they could no longer maintain their parking lot and have it fall under this regulation?
Commissioner Lukey-Pier, this amendment would apply to existing development as well. So if they are within the distances from the transit stop outlined in the ordinance, they could reduce their parking from the current stand.
Commissioners, any other questions for staff? Commissioner Gisselman?
I see in the staff report, I mean, we have information that suggests certainly that the younger demographic perhaps is buying less cars, and there's information that suggests that renters perhaps by and large are more likely to not have a car in some households. I mean, do we have, is there any data from maybe peer cities or other studies to suggest that when cities make it harder to park a car, or if there's less parking available, that because of that pain, that some residents will feel that they actually give up, they give up their vehicles?
Commissioner Gisselman, we don't have a lot of quantitative data around that. I think that there was a reference to very similar areas of New York City that had very similar characteristics. However, one was developed in a way that was much more transit-oriented, and that clearly did affect the way that people move around that city. But we honestly do not have a lot of quantitative data to suggest that making it more difficult to park through more flexibility in the zoning ordinance would immediately result in a significant change in commuting patterns. We do have certainly data that shows that in areas of the city that were built prior to World War II, which were areas developed prior to minimum parking requirements and often don't have available off-street parking, that in Minneapolis, the automobile ownership rates in those areas are significantly lower than areas developed after World War II.
Any other questions for staff? See, none. I will open the public hearing on this item, and just so I have a sense, how many of you wish to speak on this item? All right, several of you. Because of that, I am going to ask that you limit your comments to approximately two minutes and also be mindful of just not repeating material that other people have presented. So I guess the first speaker can come forward, and please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Bill Newman. First of all, a show of hands, how many of you live in Carlos households? A show of hands, how many?
I don't think that's relevant to this discussion. So I ask that you please make your comments.
I do not feel we have the infrastructure in place yet to make the Carlos City feasible at this time. It's a wonderful idea, but the way now I feel a lot of this is heading is this kind of actually prejudicial and discriminatory to some people. You studies like Portland and Seattle, Portland and Seattle don't have winters like we do. I live on a bicycle route. It's wonderful, spring, summer, and fall is full of people. In the winter, there's like hardly anyone on it, a few very brave souls. It's not practical for very many people to ride their bike or to walk or even take public transportation due to disabilities or age, whatever, and should preclude them from our neighborhoods just because they can't fit in any longer. I think it's actually bad for a lot of renters, because a lot of renters, while they are doing a different demographic of having less cars, I have rental units and I market to people that I live, or the buildings are very near the greenway, near commuter lines, everything, and I still get people with two cars, because many times they need the cars to get to their jobs in the suburbs. I really think it's really not very fair to take on-street parking away from these people just because someone really deems that they really need to get rid of their car. They need to make a living, too. On my block, we have several families with children, and it's great. The children activate in the neighborhood. The kids are out, the parents are out. It changes the whole dynamic of the neighborhood. These people have kids, and if those who have kids, you need to go to Target, you have to go to the dentist, you have to take Suzie to ballet.
Thirty seconds.
All that kind of stuff. And so to actually, and the people on my street, because of space limitations, park on the street, so to take that away is actually being discriminatory toward children with families, which I think we actually need more children with families in the city right now. At our neighborhood meeting this April, there was a vast majority of people who said that we still needed developers to provide parking at this point, because there's, in the wedge, there's just like--
That's two minutes.
Okay, we'll be totally affected by this. There was just not enough place. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Next speaker. Yes, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Peter Berjourney. I live at 3055 22nd Avenue South. It's actually the intersection of High Wathen and Lake Street, so I believe in actually one of the full minimum-reduction areas. I just want to say, first of all, to remind everyone that this will not ban the construction of off-street parking. Developers are totally free to construct as much or as little off-street parking as they would like if this still passes. I believe they are better able to evaluate the parking needs for their buildings than a blanket citywide ordinance. There are many people that are right now car-free in this city but still paying for parking because it is bundled in their rent. Unbundling will lower the cost of housing because they will no longer be paying for these parking spaces. Housing affordability is an important issue in this city. This will not solve the problem of housing affordability, but it is one step closer to making market-rate housing affordable for everyone. I actually think we should remove parking minimums everywhere, but I think this is a good start. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Yes, please, whoever. Please state your name and address for the record.
Maureen Michalski with Schaefer Richardson, 900 North 3rd Street in Minneapolis. Thank you, members of the commission. As a developer, from a perspective, for us, it's, this change would allow flexibility, but as the folks had mentioned, Mr. Wittenberg, that this doesn't create, we still have market demands, financing demands, and other needs that need to be met when we're doing development. So simply allowing flexibility in transit-oriented options and locations doesn't change the way the developer looks at it, which is, what's the market demand for that area? And as Mr. Wittenberg noted, as you've seen in other areas of the city where there has been development, where there's no minimum parking requirements, you're still seeing development include parking. So this allows flexibility and, but also increases incentives for building smaller infill developments in transit-oriented locations.
Thank you. Next speaker. And please state your name and address for the record.
Yep. My name is Barb Thoman. I live in St. Paul at 2157 Ravlin Avenue, and I'm the former executive director of Transit for Liveable Communities. I'm testifying in support of the proposed changes related to parking in the zoning code. I think that the staff made a really strong case that proposed changes will or could improve housing affordability, improve design, and to reduce the emissions from motorized traffic. So the proposed emissions would be really of great benefit to transit users. It would incentivize or could incentivize construction of housing, multifamily housing in the best locations for transit use, and then reduce the likelihood that those transit riders would have to pay for parking that they don't use and don't need. So thank you for your leadership in bringing this issue forward.
Thank you. Next speaker. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Susan Boddy. I live at 2750 Dupont Avenue South, and I'm here to speak in opposition to this proposal. This is a boondoggle, I'm sorry. My granddaughter would call it an epic fail. Back in the 60s, when they upzoned everything to R6, this was kind of, in a way, the same sort of thing, because they upzoned properties, but they didn't make people add, I mean, houses were chopped up, apartment buildings were denser, they didn't provide enough parking, and I'm living with the dystopian result of that. This sounds like a utopian proposal, car-free society, lower the emissions and all that stuff. No, I live, I'm lucky enough to have off-street parking, but a lot of my neighbors don't. The building next to me, six units, zero parking. Across the street, 11 units, zero parking. These people have cars, I'm telling you. Frequently, they park in my driveway. So, I mean, even though I have parking, this affects me and a lot of other people. This isn't kind of, this is, the idea that people have fewer cars now is also ridiculous. When I was single and I lived in the city in the 60s, I lived with four to six roommates. None of us owned cars. We all worked downtown, we bust. Nowadays, almost everybody has at least two cars, maybe more. My kids both are, you know, married and have two-car families. Nowadays, everybody doesn't work in the same place. You know, you've got your son soccer at Pearl Park, and you've got your daughter at skating in St. Louis Park. You know, you need all those. This is discriminatory to the elderly, to the limited-mobility people, to people who have children, because you can't get along just, I mean, I lived with one car for years and bust everywhere with children. It's not the easiest thing to do, and people--
That's two minutes.
Can't do it.
Thank you for your comments.
Okay, I'm just saying, please vote no on this. Do no harm. You may not be doctors, but do no harm to the city.
All right, thank you. Yes, sir. Next speaker. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Ted Bagley. I live at 2733 Gerard. And I'm also speaking against, it's, the one car per unit is really a reasonable compromise. It should really be a little bit more than that, because a lot of people have more than one car. It's a good idea, certainly, this is completely separate from bundling, in the sense that there's no reason why someone who lives in an apartment building that has parking should have to pay for parking unless they use, let's say, have a car. It's a completely separate issue. The effect of this, and we've seen it in Uptown, the effect of, it's bad enough. The new construction has already impacted parking negatively. And what's going to happen is, if this goes through, is that it will be a very great windfall for developers who don't have to provide parking, it's a lot cheaper, it's millions or tens of millions of dollars, you know? And, but, we're going to be paying the cost and having no parking. There's going to be no parking in Uptown. It's going to be, it will, it will impact everyone who lives, everyone who works, everyone who comes to Uptown. You'll have, you'll have to pay $8 or more to park your car if you're going to do, if you're going to spend the evening at a restaurant or even a half-hour at a restaurant, you know? So anyway, it's--
Thirty seconds.
So the other point, the shock of doing this is not worth the benefit. It's something, this kind of thing has to be done gradually, not like this. That's all, that's my point.
Next speaker. Yes, ma'am. And please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Kathleen Dionne, and I live at 3445 Holmes Avenue. Holmes is one block to the west of Hennepin, and I believe that I am speaking out against this proposal because I think it's the streets adjacent on either side of major transit routes that will bear the brunt of a lot of the impact. I think the proposed changes benefit developers by saving them the cost of construction and land to provide parking while shifting the burden of the increased use of street parking to the surrounding neighborhoods, particularly those streets on either side of a transit route. And we're talking about bus stops. Those of you that ride the buses in Minneapolis know, there's a bus stop at every corner practically, so that covers a lot of area. While many of the occupants of these proposed buildings may use public transportation, that probably doesn't mean that they don't own a car or that their friends that will be visiting them don't come in a car and add additional burden to the parking problem. I happen to live in Uptown. There's a number of proposed buildings in Uptown that will no longer have to provide parking. We already have a parking problem in Uptown, and so what is the mitigation for that?
Thirty seconds.
How do we provide that? And apparently, the building that had the problem with pumping water into the lakes because their parking was flooding would no longer have to resolve that issue because this applies to existing buildings as well. Please vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Please state your name and address for the record.
Commissioners, my name is Rick Varco. I live at 2265 Youngman Avenue in St. Paul, but I represent SEIU Healthcare Minnesota, statewide union of healthcare workers. We actually represent about 1,200 healthcare workers here in, who live in Minneapolis and another 3,600 home care workers who live in Minneapolis. About half of them actually work in Minneapolis in addition to living here. And despite good union jobs, fewer and fewer can afford to live in Minneapolis because of the higher housing costs here. The staff report, if you calculate it out, it's about an extra $1,500 to, for housing in Minneapolis, and that's about 5% to 10% of our members' take-home pay. Minimum parking requirements act as a huge extra tax in two ways. First, if you limit the supply of a good, you increase the cost for everyone. Desired housing is not built because developers can't meet the parking requirements or must substitute parking for housing. This missing supply means more people bidding on less available housing, which increases costs for everyone. Secondly, parking requirements directly tax people by forcing them to build or pay for parking spaces they don't want. According to the staff report, this can be an additional $20,000 to $55,000 in building cost per unit. I threw that into a 15-year mortgage calculator, that's $150 to $350 a month over the next 15 years. Because they are most likely to not want or need parking, these extra costs fall most outrageously mainly on low-income workers. According to Met Council staff analysis of census data, the median Minneapolis worker makes $34,000 a year, but those who use transit make $22,000 a year, which is about half of what the median worker uses. These are the people most likely to want to use these things. If I came to you and said, "Let's raise income taxes on people making $22,000 a year," you would all be outraged. That's exactly what minimum parking requirements are.
That's two minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Commissioner Lukey-Pier, you have a question for the speaker?
Actually, I did. Since you mentioned that you represent home healthcare workers, do they primarily get around using public transportation, or do they drive to their, the people they're helping at their homes?
Well, I can tell you two things. We don't have specific data on home care workers using public transportation. I can tell you, given the fact that home healthcare workers make around $22,000, they are probably overrepresented in the, in the population of people using transit. I can also tell you, we know from our own analysis about a little less than half actually work in their home and so are less likely to have a car or provide home care services to a close neighbor, so they are probably less likely to use a car. These are not people who do a lot of commuting.
Thank you.
All right. And next speaker. Yes, please state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Scott Schaefer. I live at 803 Douglas Avenue in Minneapolis, and I urge you to support this amendment. I see two reasons at least to support it. The first is that it supports the public interest. Many people have talked about this already, that car dependence makes us sicker, makes us poorer, and it makes us less safe. And parking is expensive to build, and it increases the cost of construction. And so removing minimum parking requirements in the transit-accessible parts of our city would allow more people to choose a more sustainable, affordable, and healthy lifestyle. And the second reason to support this amendment is that it expands personal freedom. I know my interests and preferences pretty well, and I like living in my old 13-unit apartment building that has zero off-street parking. And I happily trade, for years now, I've happily traded the convenience of having an off-street parking spot for the couple hundred dollars a month that I save from not having to pay for that. And I don't expect everyone to make that decision. I don't ask that everyone make that decision. I just ask that I have the right to. And so I ask, I ask you, from you, the freedom to buy less parking. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Yes, sir. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Chris Meyer, 1126 Fifth Street Southeast. And I support this measure, but I don't think it goes nearly far enough. The city should abolish minimum parking requirements altogether. The city has committed to reduce their carbon emissions by 80% by 2050, but this is a really vague, distant goal-- vague, distant goal and the city hasn't really done much to substantiate that yet. A couple of months ago, the city passed a resolution to divest from fossil fuel corporations, but that was really easy for them to do because they didn't have any investments in fossil fuel corporations in the first place. A lot of council members at the time pointed out that it was a really symbolic action and that the city should take more substantive action. This is a chance for you to do that. It's completely contradictory for the city to claim, on the one hand, that it cares a great deal about carbon pollution, and then, on the other, force people to build really carbon-intensive auto infrastructure. You should give people the choice whether they want to have parking. And I think it's particularly egregious that the university district in particular has been exempted from these reforms because that population there is overwhelmingly young, healthy students who are price-sensitive and would choose to forego the costs of parking if they had a choice about it. But they don't because currently, the cost of parking is included in the rent and everyone pays for that. In one study from Seattle, they found that minimum parking requirements add about $246 to the cost of rent. That's above and beyond the actual fee that you would pay. So, if you had to pay for parking, it'd be like another 150 on top of that. So, it really makes it a lot more expensive. It makes the city look silly when they talk about climate change. So, if you want to be taken seriously, if you're on the climate commitment, please abolish the minimum parking requirements altogether. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, yes, go ahead. State, state your name and address for the record.
I'm at 2733 Gerard Avenue South. So, I'm, I'm speaking as a WEDGE resident of approximately 11 years, and I've watched it more and more difficult to actually park. We don't have a one-for-one parking in the multiple-dwelling unit that I belong to. And I guess I appeal to the board as car owners. Just today, I've, I've been in a couple of different spots, Lake Elmo and some other areas for, for family purposes, family reasons, and I need a car. And I don't know about all you people, but I like to go camping. I like to get out of the city. I like the freedom of owning a car. And it sounds to me like you're trying to say, "We're going to make it punitive. You can't own a car." And I personally rented a space in a garage of a, a different apartment building for about six years, and it was beneficial for me and for the apartment building. And I know of many places that are being built that seem to me to, it's, it's, it's not mandatory to pay for a parking spot. It's, it's if you have a car and if you choose, you pay more. And why can't that sort of issue be addressed instead of this mandatory stuff that everybody's talking about? One final word, when I think of something like Edina, 50th and France, and how car-friendly they are, you know, all these giant stores are being encouraged to come to Uptown, and it, people don't like to come where they can't park. You know, it's, it's, it's anti-business and long-term. Think long-term, get some parking in Uptown. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. And please state your name and address for the record.
John Bodie, 2750 Dupont Avenue South. I'm also a WEDGE resident, and looking at this map, every property in our neighborhood will be affected by this. There won't be any parking, so when you come to Uptown for dinner, you better take mass transit. You won't find a place to park. My biggest concern is, I don't think the city has a plan for anything. We seem to be driven by developers. I've got thousands of new apartment buildings just a half block from my house. It has not lowered the cost of rental property. In fact, the neighbor who lives next to me in a building that has no parking, which should mean it was lower cost, had to move because rents have gone up so, so high they can't afford it. How are families going to, we, we want to increase the population in the city, at least that's what the city tells me. How are we going to do that if there are buildings without any parking for families? Families need cars, at least one. Most families do. Granted, you may be able to get along with mass transit, but it's a very difficult life. I think we have more social problems in the city, like minimum wage. Maybe these, rather than lowering the parking requirements, we should be looking at improving everybody's quality of life by having a higher standard of pay. I, I, I think you should...
Thirty seconds.
This, this thing should not be approved. If somebody wants to build a building without parking, possibly, they should be, come before the neighborhood and the site should be looked at whether or not it is actually appropriate not to have parking, rather than make a blanket over the whole city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, and please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Katie Jones Schmidt and I live at 2219 Bryant Avenue South, actually also in the WEDGE. And I support this proposal for many reasons, actually. I first want to state that, again, we're not, the proposal doesn't say that we're going to eliminate parking restrictions. It is a fairly reasonable proposal and I, I think it's a good compromise. As someone who studies behavior, I actually study energy efficiency behavior and how we can encourage people to be more energy efficient. The thing I've learned is about behavior is that if you make things easy, people are more likely to do them. If you make things more difficult, they're less likely to do them. And if we want to encourage people to be more transit-oriented and to make it so that, you know, we have a denser population, we act, we need fewer cars to be in the city. We need to make it more difficult for people to drive in the city if we're going to encourage the number of, you know, transit riders as well as bike riders and pedestrians and things like that. Also, this proposal is reasonable because it, I mean, it lets the market decide. And as, as already been stated, most developers are still building lots of parking, so I like that the developer had actually mentioned that it just, it allows that, that flexibility. Third, from my own perspective, my husband and I, you know, we only own one car. I think we're fairly representative of our generation, actually, and I think you should keep that in mind. We are the future and we don't plan on ever owning another car because we live in the WEDGE. We have schools in the WEDGE. We have our, our grocery store in the WEDGE. We have our doctor in the WEDGE. Everything that we need is there. We only have the car to go visit the in-laws. So, I think this is a very reasonable proposal and I, I encourage you to support it.
Thank you. Next speaker, and please state your name and address for the record.
My name's Lowell, Lowell Husers. I live at 428 University Northeast. And I, I just think this, I'm in favor of this. I don't really think this is a very revolutionary proposal. It's, it's really just removing requirements, you know, that, that pretty much in certain kind of ways subsidize car driving. Nowhere in the Constitution does it talk about a person's right to be able to drive anywhere and have a parking spot there. There's, there's, it's, it's a subs, you know, when I look around the city, I see a lot of parking subsidization. You know, there's, there's tons of space devoted to, to parking. And so, I encourage you to approve this. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, and please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Max Musikant. I live at 2427 Third Avenue South, and I'm speaking in support of this measure. I live in a rental unit. I recently moved in there a couple of weeks ago in a severely parking-restricted area, and I absolutely love it. And we, my partner and I purposely moved into that area because it was more affordable than many other options that did provide more abundant parking. And it was also much more convenient for our life. We are able to walk to meet our daily needs, and I think that these services and businesses and amenities have emerged because there is a lack of parking or a, or there's not much parking. That's why those businesses are there, along Nicollet, along Eat Street, along Franklin Avenue. And a policy like this will encourage people to walk more and businesses will evolve, people will evolve to walk and bike to places. And if we're serious about climate change, I think this is something we need to do to reduce and eliminate subsidies for resource-intensive driving. I also believe in market forces and that if there really is such a demand for parking that private enterprise will start creating for-rent parking spaces and they'll be rented just like every other land use, like office space or retail or housing. There's no difference for parking storage. It's a land use like anything else. And then finally, and maybe most importantly, I feel like this policy change will make our city much more livable, much more humane, much more vibrant, and just a better place to live. So, I urge you to support this policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, and please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, everyone. My name is Kyle Burrows. I live at 2103 Harriet Avenue South, and I'd urge you all to support this amendment. I support this amendment for a couple of reasons. Excuse me. First, it will reduce the cost of market-rate housing in the city of Minneapolis. Housing affordability is a major issue in the city of Minneapolis. I would argue it's a much more significant issue than any perceived parking problem currently in the city. Excuse me. This order, this proposal is a step towards completely unbundling the cost of parking to rents. So, those like myself who do not own a car are no longer subsidizing the others' car use, car use, which is a, a use that contributes negatively to society in terms of environmental impacts, health impacts. So, as a, as a policy, we should be subsidizing behaviors that support the public good rather than, rather than damage it. And finally, this proposal will make it easier to build smaller infill buildings, making it easier for individuals or perhaps smaller groups, local groups, to build, to access the, the multifamily construction business, allowing local Minneapolis developers to, to build smaller units, like many of the, of our neighborhood groups support...
Thirty seconds.
Rather than larger, more corporate developers. And in short, I would like to reiterate the fact that this is not imposing any restrictions on developers. This is merely removing restrictions. Any developer still has the opportunity to build, to build the parking that they see fit. I don't really want to take away anyone's car. I just want to stop paying for it, so.
Two minutes. Thank you very much. Next speaker, and please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name's Andy Pearson. I'm at 2629 Eighteenth Avenue South in East Phillips. And I come to you today to encourage you to support the proposal that's on the table. And I do that with the urgency of a young person who realizes that my future is going to be defined by climate change and by the, by the, everything that that's going to mean for us in Minneapolis and everywhere around the world. So, and I'm proud to be from Minneapolis, from a city that's decided to take bold action on climate change, at least in writing, is committed to that. You know, we're committed to increasing transit use. We're committed to increasing density in the city. This is a proposal that does both those things. And I'll go back to the point that's been made so many times, that this is not any kind of trying to take away people's parking spaces who want parking spaces. You know, parking minimums are kind of like restaurants requiring that everybody who eats there be given a piece of cake when they're done with their meal. Several people will listen to that and say, "Well, that would be great because I really like cake." And some folks, like friends of mine who might, you know, maybe that's not their thing. Maybe they prefer pie. Maybe they're allergic to wheat. You know? Not everybody needs that. And it doesn't make sense to, for the, for us to have a mandate to be providing cake to people who are not going to eat it. And it doesn't make sense for us to be providing parking in places where it's not going to be used. This is a case where if you want cake, I fully support your right to it. If you want parking, please definitely find a space and park there...
Thirty seconds.
And have it included in, in your apartment. But it isn't something we need to be providing. So, to sum up, big change is often a series of little choices. This is a little choice that can make a big difference and I encourage you to say yes. Thanks much.
All right. Thank you. Next speaker, and please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. My name is Hillary Reeves. I live at 210 North Second Street, apartment 205 in Minneapolis. I agree with many of the folks who have spoken already in support of this proposal for reasons of flexibility, for reasons of being able to maximize housing choices, for hopefully ending up with more affordable options. I would like to point out that people do have, in the Twin Cities, especially in Minneapolis, a lot of options. And so, if you choose not to have a car, you can get one. You can do an hour car. You can have a car to go. You can have an enterprise car for the weekend. So, we're not saying by these kinds of choices that people will choose to be car-free. We are giving greater flexibility for choices that people want to make, and I support that and I hope you will too. Thank you.
Thank you. And please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Jim Boyle. I live at 2624 Bryant Avenue South. I believe this is city planning at its worst. Passing this amendment will be a great mistake and hurt the residents of the city more than it will help them. We've heard that the proposal is discriminatory. Not everybody can physically ride a bike. Walking half a mile to a train station or quarter mile to a bus stop is impossible for many people. This does not promote public safety. Streets are crowded with parked cars stacked up against each other, and that's unsafe. Vehicle damage increases. Visibility decreases. Snow plowing is near impossible. Trying to find a public, parking space on a public street near one's home becomes a lottery ticket people fight for. Walking home from a car parked a quarter to a half a mile away from your home at midnight is not safe. And walking home from a bus or train a quarter or half a mile from your home at midnight is not safe. There's an uptick in violent crime in Minneapolis this year. Developers always ask for less parking than required unless they're building an extremely high-end luxury development. Luxury developers know that they cannot ask astronomical prices for their units without having full indoor parking available. And yet, their business is booming. I'll use my neighborhood, Lower Hill East, the WEDGE, as many others here are from, as an example to support the above statements. This is a very small neighborhood surrounded and bisected by frequent mass transit. We're extremely bicycle-oriented, have a...
Thirty seconds.
...Boulevard. Pardon?
You have 30 seconds.
Okay. And basically, in the WEDGE, the exemptions would not affect anything in the WEDGE. So, any developer could build anywhere in the WEDGE for this. It's already very overcrowded. I'm guessing this was written with the WEDGE in mind. The primary objective stated in the amendment is to...
That is two minutes.
...city's residential off-street parking regulations align with adopted policies. This is not true. This will not decrease market-rate housing. It's really corporate welfare for developers, and I urge you not to vote for it.
All right. Thank you. Next speaker, please, please no applause. And please, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name's Andy Tim. I live at 317 Eighteenth Avenue Southeast in Ward 2. I'm here supporting this. I wish it applied to my area too. First, I'm sort of the demographic this applies to. I don't own a car. I bus and bike everywhere I need to go in the city. I'd love to have the flexibility to live in housing where I can bus or bike and not have to pay for other people's parking if they choose to have it. I wanted to address the point about whether or not we're paying for this or not because just because a developer or building has a fee for your parking doesn't mean that that fee necessarily covers the entirety of the parking costs. So, there's a difference between saying, "Oh, I pay 300 bucks a month for parking if you paid that," and that actually being the real cost that would get paid out through your rent that the developer would be paying off when they're developing the space. So, there is an actual cost imposed on people like me, even if I'm not paying that parking fee. And then, lastly, this is a more sustainable option for our city. I'd love to see it in an area like the U where so many people do bus and bike. So, yeah, I'd ask you to approve this and I'd ask you to expand it to be in the U area as well.
All right. Thank you. And please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Kathy DeCray. I'm at 2200 Pleasant Avenue, apartment 2. I am a renter and, yeah, I mean, people brought up tons of great points about affordability, environmental sustainability, but to be honest, one thing people haven't brought up is just the, the culture of people who, who are younger. Most of my friends don't own cars because A, a lot of them can't afford it, but B, they, they just don't want to, even when they can afford it, because they care about supporting local economies. So, people who are saying that this is, this is not, this is going to hurt business, that's not true. We, we walk places. If, if someone even offers to drive, it's like, what, what? Why would we do that? Yeah, so it's about supporting local economy. It's about affordability for all of our friends, people who work corporate jobs, we want them to be able to live next to us, to the, our friends who work nonprofit jobs. And, yeah, I think it's just going to, supporting this is going to create a more interesting, vibrant city and the kind of city that 20-somethings and, and other generations want to live in. One, and you know, of course, there's still going to be a few cars here and there, but let's not make everyone pay for it. So, people have to save.
Thank you. And next speaker, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Nick Magrino. I live at...
I live at 215 Oak Grove Street, and I actually brought a picture, which I'm pretty excited about. Hopefully, it won't repeat anything that anyone else has already said. Let's see, that comes in kind of okay. So that is kind of like a missing tooth in the streetscape of my street, Oak Grove Street. It's right across the street from me. It's kind of hard to build in a spot like that just due to economics of trying to wedge a small building into a little lot. Here's a building down the street that you could put in that spot. Right now, that's not allowed in my part of Loring Park. The north part is part of the exception that already exists, but it doesn't extend quite that far down. So that's illegal at the moment. And I think that this amendment is a good idea to potentially make buildings like that legal. We often hear, especially before a commission like this or neighborhood groups, that people don't like the six-story, half-block or full-block buildings that get built, and they want to see more neighborhood-scale, three-, four-story buildings with 20 to 30 units. And this amendment will make that a little bit easier for developers to test that out. So I urge you to vote yes on the amendment.
Thank you. And next speaker.
My name is Gretchen Camp. I live at 19 South First Street. When I moved downtown in 2009, I got rid of my vehicle. I can most certainly afford a vehicle. However, like the new generation, like the woman speaking, there's a large group of us that choose not to own a car. And Minneapolis is getting more and more options for us to be able to live carless, car to go, our car, just two examples. Biking, transit is improving. I just urge you to support this amendment so that others like me can be attracted to this city. I feel like we're having some good momentum and just keep it going. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. And please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is William Wells. I am at 283 Fremont Avenue South. I am a huge supporter of this zoning code change. I think this creates tremendous design opportunities and will help create affordable housing within the city. I am really concerned presently by southeast Minneapolis being taken out of this opportunity, particularly around the University of Minnesota, which is one of the most transit-friendly parts of our city. To take this incredible opportunity away from that part of the city seems like a tremendous mistake. And I just wanted to show something to the Planning Commission. I'm an architect, and this is a building I designed in the university area. As you can see, I've been to the site and taken photographs across the last six months. There are always empty parking spaces behind this building. And that is because most of the people ride their bike, which you can see, take the LRT, walk, or use their moped. I just wanted to show the Planning Commission what would happen if we applied council member vendor's ordinance to this project. That is what I would have designed. I would have taken away four of the parking spaces, planted trees, moved the moped and bike parking to the back, and we would have had that in the university district had we applied council member vendor's ordinance to the university area. Instead, we require tons of parking in the university area, which is an enormous mistake, and I hope the Planning Commission will think about that tonight.
Thank you. Next speaker, and please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Joe Totten. I currently live at 868 Eighteenth Avenue Southeast. I have a car. I use it to commute to my job for the city of Edina. I do not believe myself to be an idiot. When I am looking for a place to live, I must consider where Goldie the station wagon will store at night, just as I must consider where my bed will go, where my dresser will go, and where my hockey equipment will go. I, when I am looking for an apartment, I will not go to Uptown where there is not much on-street parking and say, you know, that unit that does not have off-street parking, that's the one I want, because it is unreasonable for me. And assuming that people have an ounce of reason in themselves would make it such that this would not be a horrible proposal as it is being portrayed by many people here. I would also like to note that currently, my family is redeveloping a small four-unit and adding a fifth unit in St. Paul. And having something like this would have significantly reduced the costs and allowed us to put off to add more disability apartments to it, because we now have to rent those as market rate to make up the cost of rebuilding a garage. And I would also question why the university is not included in this, as many people walk, bike, and transit into campus. Thank you.
And next speaker. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Omnia Ibrahim, and I live in 7501 Lindell Avenue South in Richfield. I just want to share my experience here. So I live in Richfield, and I'm a student at U. I work as, I'm an intern with Metro Transit, and I have a car. I don't use it. I take the light rail every day. I'm happy to do that. The first opportunity that will come to sell my car and move in towards the city, I will take it gladly. I think this is a good initiative, and I think it will balance between people who wish to have a car and people who do not wish to have a car. And there are a lot of rental companies, rental car rental companies, that we can like, they can help us visit in laws or whatever. Yeah, that's it. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Next speaker. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Travis Hoosbrung. I live at 409 Seventh Avenue Northeast. I want to speak in support of the amendment. First of all, I just want to second everything that all my peers have said in support of the amendment. And secondly, I just want to bring up some broader historical context, the fact that for most of human civilization, cars have not existed or have not dominated the landscape, and people such as elderly and disabled people have been able to get around just fine, as far as I know. Well, probably not just fine, but they have survived and society has moved forward. It's only been in the last half-century that things like parking minimums and interstates and zoning ordinances have created a car-centered environment in our cities. And I just want to say that I think it's silly to think that we can try to mitigate parking issues that some people have brought up today by requiring more parking. I think that if we're going to stop a perpetuation of car-centered culture, we need to do things like this and take away requirements to create parking. Otherwise, it's absolutely silly, though, to think that we are going to decongest our streets with on-street parking. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item? No, no, everyone just has one opportunity to speak. I'm sorry. So we have another speaker, and please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Robin Garwood. I live at 2816 Thirty-Ninth Avenue South. And I'm sort of wearing two hats, but so the first is just as a resident and a member of a car-free household. I've lived without a car here in this town for 16 years now. It's great. I love camping. I love canoeing. I do that with my bike. I figure it out. It's entirely possible to do. And I think a lot of people have said some great stuff about the effects that this is going to have on our city, and I think they're right, and I urge you to support it. I'll also just say that I am policy aide to council member Cam Gordon, so that's me taking off my resident hat and putting on the other one. And I am available if anybody has questions about like, how did the university thing happen here, and what is this all about? So if you do have any questions, I'll be around.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, are there any questions, or would someone like to start us off with a motion? Commissioner Slack.
Make a motion to move staff recommendation.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Lukey, here.
Um, yeah, I just wanted to comment on this, because as it stands, I currently will not be in support of the motion. And I'm going to explain my reasons why, because I feel like it's something that hasn't been addressed. And nobody in this room, or at least nobody who testified, lives in the area of the city that apparently I live in, at least based on the addresses, unless you're all lying. And so I just want to talk about how I feel this might impact North Minneapolis, because a lot of the benefits you talk about are not going to be realized in the same way in my neck of the woods. So, A, I want to say I'm all for reducing automobile usage in the city. I think it's a great idea. I think even something along those lines is a great idea. I think that the 100% and 50% amounts still are too high. That is my feeling, and here's why. Aside from the fact that it still mandates that we have garages and parking spaces for single-family occupancies and duplexes, but suddenly if you have a triplex, you don't, it seems a little odd to me. But for North Minneapolis, I would say a large amount of our population is low-income families. And a lot of the low-income families, the one thing they have less of than money is time. And if they have children, and they have to get them to daycare, into school, and get to their jobs, odds are their jobs aren't as flexible as people in a professional environment who make more money. So if they aren't able to somehow bike or walk their child to three or four children, I should say, to three or four different locations before getting themselves to work, that means they can't work. We just made life more difficult for them. Whether or not they take the bus, the bus does not go all the places that you need to go. Also, all the amenities you guys talk about, about you can walk to meet your daily needs, we live in a food desert there. And quite frankly, we also live in a transit desert. We were promised streetcar and LRT and all these wonderful things that every other place in the city seems to be getting, and we don't get it. When you talk about car to go, I just did a snapshot today of where we're at. If you count North and Northeast together, there were 65 cars available. That's almost the same amount as we're downtown, which is 63. Or if you count all of South, 180 cars available. You have more amenities available. If you even do nice ride, we have eight nice ride stations in North. You have 33 downtown, and you have 42 in South. The ability to get around and be mobile in an area of the city like this is not as easy for people in North as it is for people in other areas. So I just want to say, to go to zero is going to put, it's an unfair burden on people with children. That's how they're going to move to the suburbs, by maybe Brooklyn Center, Brooklyn Park, areas where they can have a car and get around. I also want to say that you're right, the market will bear out. This isn't prohibiting people from putting parking in, which is why we see really high-end development come through that try to get more parking than what we'd recommend as a city. Why? Because it's an amenity. Parking is an amenity that some people have the luxury to have for, and that's great. Do you know what will happen in North if we don't require some parking? We won't get any parking, which, great, but we won't get anything in its place either. The nice landscaping, the nice amenities, the wonderful things that we see all over the city in other multiple-family or multifamily development, doesn't happen there. There's nothing here in this ordinance incenting that kind of amenity added. So all we're doing is adding more density, oddly enough, probably called workforce housing, in the area of the city with the least number of jobs available. So we're pretty much creating a situation where there aren't basic amenities, in which I think furthers the inequities in the city. All of a sudden, we will see nothing, in my opinion, but multifamily development with no parking in North, whereas other areas of the city will be able to provide amenities. Maybe they won't do the amount of parking we require now, but they'll do some, just like William Walls was saying, his example, he'd still have parking. That's great. In North, we wouldn't. We'd be seeing a bare lot. Okay? So all of a sudden then, we have areas of the city that for the next 50 years are going to be at a bit of a disadvantage to other areas that are able to provide those amenities. We've furthered the inequity for North than we would for every other area of the city, making it harder for people to live and work there. It's kind of creating a race to the bottom in my mind. I also want to say that I'm glad that this doesn't go down to the single-family and duplex development, because also in North, a lot of times when developers do the bare minimum, they don't do parking pads back when they didn't have to do them. They didn't do garages. So what would happen? People would pull their car up right next to the building. Great, we have oil leaking onto our soils. Wonderful condition. When we made people add them, that was a step in the right direction, because when crime happens to vehicles in other areas of the city, we pay our deductible, we grumble about it, we move on. What happens to people in North, if they don't have insurance, they are completely out of the means of transportation, or they have to scrape together enough money to pay that deductible. Having something like a garage or some protected means of protecting their vehicle allows them to have more reliable means of transportation if their jobs aren't locally held, which most, like I said, there aren't a lot of jobs there. So I just want to say, I am all in favor of an ordinance like this. I personally would change the numbers from 3 to 50 to say 3 to 25. I'd change the 51 and up to say 26 and up. I'd change the percentages for the 3 to 25, 75% and 60% respectively, and for the 26 and up, from 60% to 25%. Still drastic reductions from the 10% we allow now, but I think providing some parking still allows for that balance and a chance for us to still achieve equitable situations with the rest of the city instead of furthering that divide. So that is why I'm not anti-reductions in parking, I'm not anti-biking. I think it's awesome. But I just think it needs to be fair for those who can't afford it as an amenity, which is what it's going to be if we do this. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Bender.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm the author of this change, and of course, I'm very supportive. I wanted to talk a little bit about why I brought this forward. You know, our parking requirements today have a number of unintended consequences. And I hear about these consequences from my constituents, and I know that my colleagues do as well. Our parking requirements drive up the cost of housing. Even when we see buildings where people are paying separately for their parking, we know that they're not paying the full cost of those very expensive, often underground parking ramps, and that the, all of the people in the building, whether they're renters or condo owners, are paying the cost of that parking that we have required. When I ask architects and developers that are coming through the Planning Commission process how they decided how many parking spaces to put in their buildings, they're responding that we're just trying to meet the city's minimum requirements. They're not even doing the market studies that would show them how much parking is being demanded by the market. Our parking requirements also drive architecture. They result in these buildings that actually I hear a lot of negative feedback about. And I mean, there's other reasons that we're seeing, you know, the same sort of building with a concrete parking ramp with six stories of stick construction above. That's kind of a typical proposal that we see. But our parking requirements are one of the reasons why, because when you start designing your building from the number of parking spaces you must provide, and you put that in a parking ramp, it designs, it starts to design the building. And I don't think that's right. I think that our buildings should allow for more creativity, and I think we should allow for the kinds of buildings, like the picture that was shown by someone who spoke today. My constituents tell me that they love the old brick apartment buildings in my ward, but we don't allow those to be built today. And this is just one of the regulations that stand in the way of those buildings that people like to see. It's also one of a series of changes I'm bringing forward that are really small changes now. If we completely eliminated parking requirements citywide, we wouldn't see an immediate change in the market. We wouldn't see banks suddenly giving financing to developers. But developers aren't asking for this change. In fact, most of them are saying they don't really need it, because they can't get financing to build projects that have less than point seven parking spaces per unit in most of the city. But over time, you know, over the next several decades, as our city grows, this small change today will make a huge change in our housing stock. It will make a huge change in our level of affordability, and it will allow for us to be more proactive than the other cities across the country that are right now in a crisis of affordability. We have the chance now to make the changes that we need to allow for these small-scale neighborhood projects that will provide the naturally affordable housing for people who make, you know, a regular income in our city. This is our chance to be forward-thinking, and so I think this is a great change. It is not a parking maximum. I considered that and talked to my colleagues about that. I'll say to my Planning Commissioner colleagues, I think if we had imposed a maximum on parking spaces, we would see a lot of variance requests, and I didn't want to do that to everyone. I don't think we're quite there yet in Minneapolis. I would support a parking maximum in my ward, but again, I think that we would see a lot of pushback from the development community on that, a lot of pushback in general from that. So I think this reasonable, small change is one moving in the right direction.
All right. And Commissioner Gitzelman, you have a comment?
Yes, I just wanted to, just to mention that I will also not be supporting this text amendment as it is written. Certainly, it's not, it's not on the basis that I support the construction of excess parking here in the city of Minneapolis. It's certainly not based on the idea that I wouldn't support the promoting of more affordable housing, and it definitely isn't that I don't support more use of public transportation. I live in the city. I own a car. I own a car. I'm lucky to live on the blue line, though, and so when I walk out of here tonight, I'm going to ride the train home. It's really based upon the fact that I'm just not convinced that the text amendment, at least as it's written right now, won't really put the burden of parking congestion on other residents in the city, some of which who are here, who spoke in opposition to this tonight. And I just, I can't see how that's a fair burden to place on those existing residents. And so primarily for those reasons, I will not be supporting this text amendment.
All right. Commissioner Forney, did you have a comment?
Thank you. I got really excited when I read the text amendment. What I was reading in it was about housing affordability, and that so much of housing is not affordable because of a requirement to have parking. And so to eliminate the requirement for parking and to therefore make things more affordable, or affordable rents, seemed logical to me, okay? But hearing what the staff report is, hearing all of you talking, I'm hearing that this is not a housing affordability amendment. This is a transit orientation amendment, and I think it's defeating the purpose of housing affordability. I feel the tool of limiting parking needs to be hooked directly to housing affordability. So if developers do create affordable housing, then they can apply for eliminating parking. That, to me, seems like a more equitable thing. But then when you start thinking about that, then are we only driving affordable housing close to transit? And therefore, are we creating new ghettos? I feel that the way that the text amendment is presently written, I feel as if we are providing the opportunity for unintended consequences. Therefore, I will be voting against it.
All right. Commissioner Gagnon.
I just wanted to speak a little bit to the people getting their kids to daycare, to school, to Soforth, and so on. And I know there's been a lot of great conversation around universal pre-K, around early childhood programs, and also, especially for K-8 students, they do have school buses. But we've also been really working in Minneapolis Public Schools. If you attend our early childhood program, some of which are full-day, and that we really are trying to make more full-day access, we do bus kids to and from their home. And so, and that's where school readiness monies is different than early childhood, because you don't necessarily get a bus with school readiness support. So I think that's something that the city, that the state is looking at, because transportation equity is a huge thing. But I also, you know, I hear what Alyssa is saying, in that North Minneapolis, there's also sparsity of things to walk to. I'm fortunate to live in an area that I can walk to everything. That's not the case. I work in North Minneapolis. You cannot walk to everything. So that is a very real thing. I think that has to be a conversation that coincides with this transportation and home price affordability conversation. We can't have one without the other. I will be supporting this, but I do think it is imperative that we also have the conversation around sparsity in different parts of the city, that it's not walkable. And there's a, either perception or reality of safety also, and the, even the choice system within schools, kids are going all over the place to school, so they're not necessarily going to their community school. All of those things are huge issues. I do, I do think there are also a lot of zoning. Ryan's been trying to explain to me, all the yellow doesn't apply to this, because single, some of the yellow doesn't apply to this, because of single-family dwellings and so forth. So I do think there will still be a lot of home flexibility in this amendment. But those other conversations have to happen in the city, because we are leaving out a huge group of folks. We're just assuming everybody's the same, everyone's not uptown for sure. So that conversation has to continue.
And Commissioner Kronzer.
Thank you, President Brown. I will be supporting this amendment, and I have three reasons I wrote down late last night, and I'm sure there's another dozen more I could state. But this is, this amendment is allowing for the option of less parking. It's not mandating less parking. I think that needs to be very clearly stated. This is not a mandate for no parking. This is a, leaving the option open to allow less parking in new developments and some existing developments. It also could allow for smaller-scale infill developments to happening. We saw a project recently, three sites in South Minneapolis, small park on the back. I think this amendment will help encourage smaller-scale developments, maybe even two- and three-story newer developments, and maybe less five- and six-story developments. That is definitely yet to be seen, but this will not lessen that. And also, this could also improve transit service over time. With transit and density, it's a chicken-and-egg thing. The more density, the better the transit service, the more transit service, the more people ride the bus or the trains. So, you know, over time, we could see more transit service, higher frequency, more than just what's out there today as well. So I will be supporting the amendment.
All right. Commissioner Slack, did you have another comment?
Well, I will also be supporting this text amendment. I think long-term, it's going to provide a lot of benefits that we're not seeing now. So in the short term, I don't see that we'll see much in the way of really how it's going to affect development proposals. What I do see is that it's going to create and take us to the next step of becoming a more sustainable city. I've spent some time in the last couple of weeks since we actually saw this first account and tried to go through essentially the last nine to 12 months of development proposals that we saw. And obviously, we didn't see any development proposals where a developer asked for complete reduction in parking. We saw quite a few development proposals where there was a reduced number of parking, but it was a limited number of parking, and a lot of those requests were really based on site-specific. So the site's too small, the site's oriented the wrong way, yada, yada, yada. So I actually, you know, I do development work, and we've had a couple of testimony from a couple of architects and developers. Parking really is driven by financing. Parking is really driven by the market. And in the short term, I actually don't see how this is really going to affect what we see on a day-to-day basis from a development review standpoint. And so I do think, though, long-term implications of this are going to be very beneficial for the city.
Right. Is there any other comment? I have a few words to add, and I would like to thank the staff. I think they did a very good job of laying out the issues. I do want to point out that part of what is driving this is that we have seen a change in the trend over the last several years in automobile ownership. And I think we do, we do need to be prepared to adapt to that. Younger people are owning fewer and fewer cars. People are waiting longer to buy a car. People are selling their cars when they move to a different place. So I think we've seen a lot of evidence that our current one-to-one parking ratio is too high in a lot of places. We've seen variance requests and other requests related to the amount of parking that's provided with new residential construction. So I do think it's important that we evolve with some of those trends, and we, I do feel that this is one less barrier to producing more affordable housing in the city. Over the last couple of years, a lot of the new construction we've seen has been more luxury-type products right around downtown. And that's fine. I think it's great that we have people who want to live in the city, and I think the more people we have, the more sustainable city we have with a more stable tax base, more vibrant, vibrancy, I think it benefits all of us. But I do have a concern that we haven't seen a lot of more mid-scale residential development or moderately priced development. And if parking isn't always included in that, that can certainly reduce the cost of construction. So I think that's another important consideration. Commissioner Bender.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I neglected to speak to the questions about the university district overlay area before, and I just wanted to clarify that, you know, we just adopted those new parking standards in that area last year, and that was done with a lot of community engagement and a lot of discussions with the council offices in the community. And so to really respect that process, we didn't include it in this conversation. You know, I personally am open to hearing more about that issue, but that was why, just because that process had just ended last year, that we left that out of this discussion.
Is there any other discussion? We have a motion and a second to approve this text amendment, and if there is no further discussion, clerk, please call the roll.
Bender.
Aye.
Forney.
No.
Gagnon.
Aye.
Gisselman.
No.
Kronzer.
Aye.
Lukey, here.
No.
Slack.
Aye.
So that is four yeses, three noes.
All right. And that motion carries. This will go on to the Zoning and Planning Committee of the City Council. And that concludes our business for today. We will have a committee of the whole meeting this Thursday at 4:30. Otherwise, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Matt, are you done with this?